Good evening. Welcome to the Ashland Planning Board Meeting of Monday, June 22nd, 2020. We are meeting online virtually through the Zoom platform due to the governor's state of emergency declaration. We are also being recorded and broadcast and livestreamed by WACA TV, and we thank them for that. If you are watching live on the livestream, be aware that any comments you make online, you're free to do that, but the planning board will not see them during the meeting and will not be able to take anything you say into account unless you join the Zoom meeting and talk to us in our meeting here. We have only one item of business tonight of substance, which is a continued public hearing on Phase Two of 81 West Union Street. This is the continued development where the new storage building is in front of the middle school. And there's a, there are two proposed additional buildings. Both have contractor bays in them. One of them also has a retail or office space in the front. And they also all both have residential units in them. So it's an interesting mix. We've been through a lot in the process, and we are hoping we might be able to finish this tonight. So with that said, I will turn it over to the developer for an update on any changes in the final plans or status.
Yeah, well, thank you, Peter Barberi for 81 West Union Street LLC. Again, thank you for holding this meeting. Since the last meeting, work with Peter and nature decision we'll get into, we also submitted you the building three plans as stamped by the architect. There was just some details added to that in the nature of the detail of the corners of that building and the signage reflective of what the signage is shown on Building 1A. We also submitted revised Building 1A, and the only changes to that is that those brackets in the boxes we had under those dormers, there was some concern or whatever about those last time, so we've taken those out. So you now have fully stamped floor plans as well as building elevation plans by the architect. As to the site plan, we submitted a revised site plan. One of the comments that your consultant made was that the parking space immediately to the right of Building 1A, which is really the residential parking. We had identified a handicap parking space there, and we had had the striping on the left-hand side of the space, which really isn't per code. In looking at, looking at that and to correct it, we also identified that we had a dumpster to the right of that, which theoretically would be visible as you come into the site. That was a third dumpster, which we don't need three, so we took that dumpster out. So we now, we just have a dumpster behind Building 1A and then the very back end of the site by Building Three. By taking that dumpster out, we were able to add an additional parking space so that there's four parking spaces there for the residential units. And then we flipped the handicap striping on the other side, so we have a handicap parking space for the commercial uses in the front of the building immediately next to the building. Those are the only changes in the plan, other than Bart filling in some details in nature of test pits, elevations, those things that your engineer asked for. So that's where we are in the nature of the plan. So I don't know if there are any questions on that, or we just want to try to work through the decision that PETA has provided.
Peter, what's our?
So currently, Mr. Barberi, last week on Thursday, I, no, excuse me, last Wednesday, let me take that back. I had sent the board a draft decision with a, with a few conditions in them. I also sent the plan, the decision to Town Council Lisa Mead, who has reviewed the decision. And after reviewing it, she really has not made too many comments or edits to what the planning board received this past Wednesday. However, being back into the office today, working with Assistant Planner Emma Snelling, we went through the decision and we sent it back to the board. At this time last week, just to give you an update on the site, last week, the applicant, Mr. Bill Rodenheiser, to the front area closest to the street, loomed and then hydro-seated that area, and will continue to water that area to cut down on the dust that is coming off the site. One of the elements that I tried to really make sure that we got a good handle on is the dust and site control within the decision, along with construction updates and also a security decision, condition at the end, which was something that those board do. It's a little bit of research within past decisions I took from a condition concerning the Village of Americas Phase Seven, I believe, Chairman, concerning site security and the construction, ongoing construction, maintenance and inspections. So I think at this point, I think we can kind of talk through the decision if the board would like and/or ask the applicant to present the revised plans. However, Attorney Mead had, had what, you know, made some, a few changes. Nothing, I would say, of elements that, you know, I think we should review, just minor, some grammatic, however, all were accepted. And the plan was, I'm sorry, the decision was then sent out to all planning board members this afternoon.
So the version that was sent to us this afternoon has all of the attorneys.
All of the latest comments, yes.
All right. As far as the peer review comments, are there anything, is there anything outstanding that we need to address in conditions? Or that the planning board hasn't discussed where they said at the jurisdiction of the planning board?
No, the player review come. Do you see, you've received. Very comment from GCG. They, I had a phone conversation with them late last week. All the store mortar clogs and stuff match up. They have, you know, they, they understand, they, they don't, nothing was glaring. No issues were red flag, I would say. And all elements seem to be in order. I will say that this project will, because it has changed from its previous notice of intent within the, with the Conservation Commission, will have to return to the Conservation Commission prior to construction. However, that's just a sequence of events when you're dealing with two different boards kind of go way back.
I was wondering about Town Council's input on the flat roof item. I think last week we still hadn't heard. So, or the week, the last meeting, we still haven't heard what her or their, the company's viewpoint was. We were only kind of putting out our own, and so, so what was their official viewpoint on that?
Yes, speaking, we were having a conversation via the telephone with Lisa. She believes that the roof as proposed as a man's art roof meets the spirit of the covenant. And, and she, and she thought that was acceptable after reviewing all the documents, and she's been on board helping me with this case. You know, all the way through the process for the entire year. So she, you know, with, with her reviewing of the, of this decision, I additionally sent her the, the original decision for Phase One, the modified decision for Phase Two, the covenant signed from 2006, and all other elements, including the details in the site plan. So she had all the material. And she felt that the, the way that the decision talks about the covenant was appro, is appropriate as written, as drafted, I would state, in that the roof does meet the spirit of the covenant from 2006.
Thank you.
Can I comment on that?
Yes, you may.
The covenant is referenced throughout there, and we know it's out there. There were some references to the covenant that aren't necessarily accurate. For example, one of them returns around and says the petitioner signed the covenant. Well, the petitioner and the owner of the property in this thing is 81 West Unit Street LLC, which Bill is the, the manager of that. The covenant, as you recall, was signed by WJR LLC, as Bill is the manager. So there are some corrections that are going to, that need to be updated along those lines. And the other thing we would like to put in there is it clearly the, the reference of the covenant that's there, but we request that we in fact specifically reference that the covenant was never recorded. We have said all along, we don't believe in the, the enforceability of that, but are willing to work with a plan to make sure we fulfill the intent and spirit of the, of the covenant, which we think we done. But we request references to unrecordability and also the covenant being signed by WJR, which is not the owner of the property.
Yeah, I, I noticed a couple.
If you want, if you want us to work with Lisa to clarify those things and make sure they're accurate, that's, that's one way of doing it.
My thought is that we should put in the documents of record section, a cite the covenant and state in the, and is it there?
Yeah, I think it's item U.
Yeah, it's there, Preston.
Okay. Yes, and that says executed by, so that is clear. And.
Then later on in the body, it says executed by the petition, and the body of decision is as executed by the petitioner, which it wasn't. And again, I would just like reference to the fact that the covenant was not recorded.
Well, please know Bill was the principal for both LLCs, correct, for the record?
What's that?
So William Rodenheiser was the principal of both LLC organizations for the record.
He was, he was the, the manager of WJR would sign the covenant. WJR is not the owner or the petitioner under this application.
Okay, but they're the same, William Rodenheiser is the same.
Two different LLCs.
I think though that the planning board wants to make sure that is known in the future that the covenant and the person applying for this is the same person. Otherwise, we might.
It's not, it's not, you can't change that.
It, it's a different legal entity.
Right.
Headed by the same person.
Both legal entities are headed by the same person.
Yeah.
Now.
Who controls the entities?
Yeah, I thi, I think if we can work the proper references with, with Lisa, I think that can be settled out.
Yeah, proper references that the planning board agrees with.
Yeah.
As we are the ones signing it.
Going to put down the right references.
Yeah, as we are the ones signing it or not signing it. Let's make that clear.
Yeah. I, I think what we could do is we can take out the part where it says the covenant, where it refers to signed by the applicant or petitioner. We could put in a new finding, in facts and findings, that the covenant was never filed with the deed or whatever the legalese for that is, that the planning board considers it to be valid. The applicant does not, however, because the.
Yeah, that's fine.
However, because the terms are being met through this application, the question of whether or not it is valid is moot at this time.
Absolutely. We agree with that 100%.
So that's simply a statement of where the different parties lie and that we don't need to resolve the conflict because we've abided by it whether we had to or not.
I think it's important to have in there, given that, and we've talked about this early on, that an entire building was constructed after that covenant was put in place. And so I don't want this to be all a little gentle go into listing of this covenant to make it nice for the applicant's lawyer. All right? I think we should put it in how we want it, and they can either take it or not take it.
So we've come this far. I don't think you want to start on that battle. I think Preston.
I don't think you do either. I don't think you do either. So let, let's the planning board decide what the terms are going to be that we are willing to sign.
Well, I think if, if, if PETA can put the language that Preston put together just now.
Yeah, no, I don't agree with that language.
Council, and, and we call it a day.
Yeah, I don't agree with that language. So I think we're going to back up a little bit on that as well. We have to have something that the planning board is also comfortable with, the five of us, so.
I, as always, I'm just one member. So, you know, my throwing out the potential language does not necessarily mean that's what we're going with, so.
Just to speak, Tricia, I think you, I hear you a lot of clear. I think I'll, you know, I'll work to edit the findings. It put a little bit more detail about the covenant, the history. I will put in that it was obviously not reported. And, and, you know, where the two parties lie. And then, you know, that, you know, within the condition, you know, we have drafted the conditions of this permit seen fit in relationship with the covenant in the spirit of the covenant.
Why, why wasn't it recorded, Peter?
It's a great question, Joel.
No, I was asking Peter, Peter Barberi. Peter, what, why, why wasn't it recorded? I guess we've heard that a hundred, you know, many, many, many times in these proceedings, but it's unclear. It's never been really defined why it wasn't recorded.
I didn't get the question.
Why was the covenant never recorded?
Why wasn't the covenant recorded?
Your town council was supposed to sign off on it, get it back to us. They never did. You see his signature line on the form, which was not done. So we never got it back. Everybody simply forgot about it, and people went on their merry way. We also couldn't develop it for a period of time because you folks had a sewer moratorium in, in effect.
All right. So apart from the, how we word the findings on the covenant, let's look at the conditions and see where we are on that. I want to start with, we have some that are in yellow, that are bolded in yellow. So I'll start with those, if that's all right.
Start with one thing, which is right on the first page, which is just making sure we're all consistent with the areas in the bedroom count and everything else. I gave those comments to Peter earlier today. But the bedroom counts and there's references to only office in Building 1A on the fourth floor, which needs to be second and the third floor. So I just want to make sure the description of the properties, which talks about, you know, commercial uses slash contractor base in the rear for Building 1A, not using in the rear for Building One, Building Three, and then just the right numbers of bedrooms. So I just want to make sure we're all in agreement that that should reflect the, what we now show on the plans.
And Peter, you, if you want to go over the square footage in the bedroom count, please feel free to do so.
Yeah, I, I.
I'll give you a schedule that gets that number.
Yeah, I agree with the applicant that the description there does not match exactly the plans we've been discussing, and it should be correct. So looking at the conditions, I want to, I'm looking at the, the version that says is the special permit version of a decision. I'm assuming both decisions are nearly identical. Is that correct?
Correct. The conditions for both decisions are identical. One is for the special permit, one is for the site plan review. Did two different processes.
Right, I understand.
And so also there's two different sets of findings in accordance with the bylaws. However, for the conditions, they're, they are identical.
Okay, yeah, and the, the findings would be slightly different because the findings for the special permit need to cite the special permit conditions in this.
The special permit cites the special permit findings, and then the site plan approval cite the spite site plan findings.
Excellent.
In relationship to the bylaw.
Okay, so looking at the conditions, Condition 24, "In the event of rock crushing on site, the applicant shall notify the town, the Ashland Middle School, and abutting neighbors 24 hours in advance of the commencement of crushing activity. During crushing, applicant shall be vigilant of school hours to minimize disruption." Peter, could you explain why this is highlighted and, and what we need to consider on that?
Well, I think the number one thing is the flexibility to the school and also the neighbors. And, you know, within Phase One, there was rock crushing on site. I don't know if applicants were, I mean, not applicants, excuse me, but the abutters were notified just to be, you know, I would say of a courteous, you know, courteous notice to make sure that everyone was on the same page when this activity was going to transpire. Obviously, you know, with the history of Site One, you know, I think it's appropriate for the applicant to be responsible, to be courteous to the abutters and also to the actual middle school to make sure that, you know, this will take place at a time when there's no, you know, standardized tests taking place at the Ashland Middle School. And also it's courteous to notify the abutters, so the abutters know when, if it's an appropriate time, if they want to be in their house, or if they want to take a drive and go get lunch. I think, you know, that's where my thinking is from that decision. And I think 24 hours was, was, was an appropriate amount of time. This site is a, is pretty much a cut site, which means material will be taken off. And, you know, there's been some fairly large boulders that have been that rest on the site. And so therefore, I thought it was appropriate to put that in, Preston.
I, I'm concerned about the "during crushing applicant shall be vigilant of school hours to minimize disruption." It doesn't say they should avoid school hours. And it doesn't say that the town may restrict them from rock crushing during school hours. So we, we might need some stricter wording there.
Which paragraph you're looking at?
This is Condition 24.
Thirty-four, okay.
Twenty-four.
Oh, twenty-four. I was looking at the other decision, that's why.
I don't think you can ban, you know, eliminate rock crushing during any school hours because that might be a huge problem.
I think though the school can give approval to be notified and give approval for those hours before they can, before they continue that rock crushing.
We, we have, you've got a decision, the hours of operation, so.
Yeah, but the.
Seven to seven.
The, the question is, will the rock crushing make enough noise to be disruptive to the educational process going on at the school?
You guys probably could ask them because I don't recall last time that it was, and we were closest to the school. But obviously, you'd have to ask them what their opinion was. I can't speak for them.
Right. I mean, that activity has been taken place on the site. There hasn't been a complaint from the school during the last operations.
Well, then this, then this number 24 should be no problem. So let's keep it in there. Let's make sure they ask for permission first from the school. And if it hasn't been a problem.
Yeah, we have no, we have no problem.
Sure, it wouldn't be a problem in the future.
And what happens if the school just decides to say no? Then what do we do?
Well, it's making sure it's done during, during hours that are appropriate, right? So.
So seven, seven to seven, is that what the, is that what you mean? Because I don't.
Happening at seven o'clock.
What's that?
Well, the school is way out by seven o'clock, right? So, but it may not be happening during school hours. I don't know. Like Peter said, what if there's testing going on that day that you want to, that you want to rock, crush? You know, we can't, we can't have that.
My bigger, you know, I think notifying the school and letting everyone be aware was going on if the board wants to make sure that the school can grant approval. I, I think that we could add that to the decision, but my frame of thought when I drafted this, this, this condition was just a notification to allow everyone to be on the same page within the immediate vicinity of the site, and.
I think, I think there could be a lot of things going on in the school, not just testing. A lot of things that happen and that a random time to, that you're just going to notify someone that this is going on isn't enough. I, I agree with Preston that there should be some kind of, there should be more there. And that's just one of the issues when you build next to a school.
Okay. Okay, so I'll add the, the, the school shall grant approval of the appropriate time of, of crushing.
We know who at the school, because.
Tell them what you, what the objection is.
Well, it would be, it would be of crushing during school hours. So this, so if they are at four or five o'clock in the afternoon and school's not in session, even if there's sports going on, you know, they, they, the school couldn't say no. But if they're at 10:00 in the morning and there's, you know, standardized testing going on or some, or they've found based on their experience from, you know, maybe they said yes one week, and then the next week they realize, hey, that really disrupted this. You need to not do that during the school day, then they could say no.
Preston, I have a question. Can you, is it possible for you, I'm sorry, this is Bill, I'm off camera, but is it possible for you to ask them, I mean, it probably should be a good idea anyways, because I don't remember them, that, that a problem being raised with the crushing, and it doesn't go on for months and months, you know, it's a week ago. What if we gave them some sort of a notice? You know, we just, can we just give them a week notice, and then everybody knows, and then if they have a problem, we can all communicate about it?
You can't rearrange, you can't rearrange standardized tests with a week notice.
Well, they know when they're doing the testing. We'll just.
Yeah, yeah, months in advance, so.
So we won't do it then.
Well, right, so that if, if, if the crushing really wasn't a big deal in the past, then it should be no big deal to ask for permission and to, and to arrange a day that is appropriate for the school.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting it is if it's not, if it's not unreasonably withheld at all.
Right.
I will also add that I don't, I don't think that anyone can predict what the schedule for the fall is going to look like for schools.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They probably.
But I think putting something in where the school shall grant permission not to be unreasonably held. Hold, I'm sorry. Makes, especially, we could even cite, you know, during significant testing or something.
That's fine.
Okay, that's fine.
But, but, you know, the, the point is you should coordinate with the schools to, you know, to try to find the least disruptive time.
Okay.
I, I think we're in agreement on the, the net effect. We, we might need to work on the language a little bit. All right, moving on, Condition 39, "The applicant shall install 240-volt electrical vehicle charging accommodations for X number of vehicles for residents and visitors, visitor to the property."
Yeah, I proposed the change of that. We've got one stall next to Building 1A for the residents there, and one stall next to Building Three for the residents there. My understanding is each stall has two, so that's for four vehicles. So each of the residents will be able to have two hookups, you know, each of the residential units will be two hookups. And that's.
Yeah, I think all it needs to, since it's shown on the plan, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the plan is binding, so all it should need to say for this condition is "The applicant shall install 240-volt electrical vehicle charging accommodations, accommodations as per the plans."
Yep.
And that solves that.
Yeah, that was just highlighted, Preston, just so I knew to make note, plug in the exact number of stations as we confirm the decisions.
Yeah, I, I think we just put as per the plans.
Yep, that's fine.
And that's the only other one that was highlighted in yellow. I, I think the other important condition is the last condition, number 46. This is the one I believe you took from the Village of the Americas decision.
After the conversation with you, Preston, yes, I ended up doing some research and, and finding the condition. I believe from people I talked to, Town Manager Michael Herbert, that this condition worked well with that final phase without the. Phase, without the final phase, but the last phase for Village of the Americas with the town. Received money in escrow and then. The event. In the event that the town i- is running into issues with the contractor, we shall, you know, be able to use these funds to, to pay for a. Inspector of the site to make sure that everything is going and maintains a proper flow of, of the construction work.
We had a question as to whether you needed given, and I don't know what number it is in the special permit conditions, but there's a paragraph in there that talks about a schedule. Would you like to give your folks on a monthly basis as well as have meetings and do that, then you know it's getting, getting done if there's any issues that be addressed through that. So we think that could be incorporated in there without the need for an extra ten grand, or if you need some money, we would hope you'd agree to five thousand.
This, this mechanism means the money is already there if we need to, if we feel we need to hire an inspector. This is, a- as we've said, this is not the first time we've used this mechanism. It's also money that you get back if we don't need it. And, you know, so if you are. Constructing things appropriately, managing dust. Not starting before the start hours or working past the end hours, that kind of thing, then.
Yeah, we, we just think five thousand a little steep, that's all. Oh, excuse me, ten thousand is a little steep, five thousand we think is more appropriate. Cause if it's a consultant, what's he getting paid a hundred bucks an hour? You know?
It's more the incentive.
That says if it's depleted, you know, we have to supply another five grand.
I would be good with if, that we. If we started at five and, and, but put the if depleted, the applicant must replenish the account. Or stop work.
What is typical, Peter? If ten thousand is typical, then I think we, we stick with that, right?
No, Tricia, I've seen. The way this condition was constructed for the Village of the Americas, Village of the Americas started at twenty-five thousand dollars. Village of the Americas' final phase was. A, a lot of residential units and it was a much bigger, much more complex construction site. Typically in my eyes, we're gonna use this as a fifty-three G account, which means the money is held in escrow. And the town is able to use it. It's very similar to what we do for a, for our third-party review engineering, right? Money comes in, the account's set up, we send it off to our consultant, they review it. Okay, it kind of pays for this. And so in my eyes, you know. My past experience, you know, we used to have a six thousand dollar account. Ten thousand dollars is a number that, you know, I saw that, that we could use. And then obviously, you know, it, it's, it's a lot less than what the town previously or historically kind of set. For another project and so it, it was more around number that I, you know, that I, that I just took and transferred. So I've seen anywhere from, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars, I will say was high. However, that was a much higher scale project, much a larger scale project. This on the smaller scale, I just put ten thousand dollars. I've seen anywhere as low, you know, in the town handover, my previous employer. We would typically use a six thousand dollar consult or review fund. Party engineer and we are using it in the event that we need to. Have an official, hire an official inspector to be on that site on, you know, on a daily basis. So I would say five seventy-five hundred dollars, I think we're right in the same ballpark.
Yeah, I mean, from my point of view, given the other issues we've had with this project and this site, the continue, the, the fighting we've had to do just to get. The dust control on the site, like for the past year, right? Everything's simple. To get the right people on the job so that we make sure that things are being done to code right from the beginning to under, make sure codes are understood as far in, in the building process. We've gone through this time and time again. It's not been an easy process, so to me, I'm very uncomfortable with going with a low number. You know, I don't think, I don't think it's been earned. I don't think a low number has been earned in this process, so. My, my opinion, I'd like to hear from the rest of the board. I would keep it at ten. I don't think there's any reason not to. They get it back when the project's done if they haven't used it.
Well, even if, even if it stays at ten, there's nothing in there about it, the ten runs out. What happens if the ten is used up?
I don't know.
Another one of those little details that we get into a mess later. Like Preston said, no matter what we put in there, we should put in there that if the funds, if it's depleted. They need to stop work until they put more money in. That should be in there anyway, no matter what.
Yeah. I would, I would agree.
I'm willing to defer, it should be five or ten to the Ferrises, who would they feel comfortable with? Because I mean, that's where like a lot of this trepidation seems to like stem from, is like the dust and those type of, I mean, that's. My, besides like noise and things like that, I mean, you have something that's saying they haven't been able to breathe for two years, which is like. You know, I, I, for a couple of thousand dollars, I, I, you know, on the side of caution.
Just to step in here, I think I, you know, from my experience in, in the scale of the site, I think seventy-five hundred dollars would be, would be acceptable. And with the addition of the depletion of funds will be, you know, if funds are depleted. You know, the applicant will be asked to replenish. And I'm also going to write in there, you know, if the, the funds fall below two thousand dollars, the funds will therefore be replenished. And so then we always have a recycling amount of money into the, into the account. Now, let's be, you know, just to start off here, we don't want the, we're not gonna look to spend the applicant's money, right? If the applicant is meeting monthly or bi-weekly. Construction, you know, meetings and schedules and everything is going on site and as planned. There'll be no need to use this money above and beyond other, the inspections that are required, right? And so, you know, is, is, is this the amount of money, you know, that the applicant will receive at the end? We're not trying to. We're just trying to make sure the construction site is, is, is working in, in order and everyone is being respectful of each other as the site is developed, I would say.
So Pete, on phase one, do you have like about, do you know anything about how much we spent inspecting that? Ballpark figure or how many?
Well, this is, this isn't for the regular town inspections. This is for extra inspections.
That's what I'm saying. How many, how much we spent because there was dust issues, there was traffic issues, there was other issues. Did we, did we spend out any of that fund on phase one? Did they, did, did we use any of that or all of it?
No, we didn't have this condition on phase one.
You know, that you, you use my time. You pay, you know, me as a town planner, dealt with. The contact that daily made the back and forth with the owner of the site, with the contractors. And it was me, it was my, it was my time.
Village of the Americas, that was twenty-five thousand. Do we know how much that, it was a bigger project, but I, 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 we don't have any kind of a reference, really.
And I, that's why I said, Dale, that from my experience, seventy-five hundred dollars is the number I'm comfortable with. And I've seen, you know, that amount in my past, in my past work experience and so. I'm not just trying to make a compromise, but I will tell you that, you know, and that, you know, in my previous employer, the town to hand over on a site like this. We would take six thousand dollars, it was drafted, it was written into the bylaws. And so that applicant would have to kind of have a, a count like this for that sum of money for inspection. And so that's the way it was operated. Maybe it's something that we want to put directly into our bylaws within our site plan approval process. However, you know, that's a different conversation to have, but I think at this point, you know, I think. That's a good sum of money to have.
Well, I would go along with what you think it is because you know more about it than I do.
Yeah, I just don't want the town having to pay your salary for a lot of extra time going out there. If, if there are issues and that's really what this whole condition is designed to prevent. And the fact that we have this means it's a, an extra carrot stick for the developer to make sure. They know they need to take care of things because they don't want us to spend this money.
And like you said, if it goes down to two thousand, you're plenty to add back to the fund if it uses that much up. I think that's a good thing. When it gets to two thousand, okay, you gotta put some more money in or. Stop working till you get the money in there.
Yeah.
Last thing we. Need to have the money in there for that so that Pete doesn't have to do it and that, like you said, if they're doing everything right, then they're gonna get it all back.
The last, the last thing we want to have to do is issue a stop work order for something like this. So, yeah, that, that sounds like the right way. I'm good with seventy-five hundred with a replenish if it drops below two thousand. I, I see nodding from other board members, so.
I'm fine with that.
Yep. Are there any other conditions that you think we need to talk over? I think most of them look pretty straightforward.
There's one that can, you know, I think everything is more likely, mostly equally kind of straightforward. In a conversation I had with Mr. Rodenheiser today. I just kind of want to add a condition or maybe clarify something on one of the conditions that. You know, Mr. Rodenheiser, the, the special permit, the site plan are gonna be good for, the permit's good for two years, right, before he can, before he has to act on it. And so I'm gonna add a little bit. That from the date of this decision. And actually, when I was thinking about this, I went back to the, to the phase one conditions. That from the date of this decision until the date building permits are applied for, the site plan is acted on. The applicant is responsible for the security. Of the site, which would also include the dust coming off of the site. And so therefore it's all kind of wrapped up and, and taken a look at because. I went back to the modification decision of this board at phase two. And we talked about if the decision is filed and grading on the site. And so I wanted allow, I just want to give, have some clarification on the timeframe of this process and, and how this. Development is proposed to play out. Obviously, you know, Mr. Rodenheiser runs a business, he has to schedule work. This is his site and so therefore he would have to schedule this site within his work element, but. Also, he needs to be responsible for the site, the security and the dust coming off the site. And so therefore I, I am gonna add a little bit more to clarify. That, that according, according to the plan.
That sounds good.
Yep.
All right.
We had some comments in the nature of some of the conditions, you want?
Now would be a perfect time.
There are a number of, of references to, it talks about submitting plans and the nature of a, a plan showing snow storage and the nature of the plan showing landscaping. Nature of the plan showing lighting, nature of the plan showing stamped architectures, all of which you now have. And that's what you're approving tonight, so. I was just hoping we could agree that what we would do as we did with the, the electrical charge stations. We just referenced, you know, as shown on the plans because you've, you've got those and that's what's been reviewed by your consultant, by everybody. That's what's being approved. So specifically that was paragraph ten. Paragraph seven. Paragraph eleven.
Well, you've already said, if it's on the plan, then it's already submitted, right?
Right. And been reviewed, so there's no reason to say we shouldn't have to submit another plan.
Not another one, just says submit a plan and if it's on the plan, then it's submitted. That's how I read it.
Well, but then it says. And approval, you're already approving it, so I'm just.
Rather than submit a revised snow storage plan, maybe submit the final or whatever.
I, I think we could preface each of these three conditions with. If there are any changes from the approved plans.
Yeah, that, something like that.
Because th- then if there are, it's clear there is a process.
Yeah.
And if there aren't, they've already been approved, so there's no process.
Just look in eleven, it says prior to the issuance of building permits, the applicant shall submit a revised snow storage and plan and exterior lighting. We haven't been asked to revise the plan that you're approving tonight. So I think we just say, you know, lighting and landscaping and snow storage shall be as shown on the plan.
But that. May be a cut and paste error from another decision.
Yeah, I think it was just copied from a prior whatever, and, and we're beyond that at this stage of the game.
Yeah.
I'm good that with what.
Same thing with the. The elevations, you're approving those.
I'm good with the, like Preston said, the, just, just mentioned that any changes must be submitted. Anything different than the plan.
Right, you're certainly a condition if the plans change, we need to get approval of the change.
Condition eleven though, condition eleven is good as, as is.
Yeah. He's talking about ten, the snow removal.
But, yeah, ten.
One comment on that one, because we're gonna build these buildings, probably one building before the other. So I would request the change of that, that the landscaping in the area of the building that we're completing and the perimeter. Needs to be completed, but the landscape, if we, let's say we do one A first and there's a bunch of landscaping on the backside of building three. Which we may not do because we may not do the parking to get there for building three. So I think that, that from the viewpoint of the landscaping, it all won't be in at the time we seek occupancy of the first building. But certainly.
I would.
Environment landscaping for that building and the perimeter needs to be in place, or, or otherwise you, you put up a bond for whatever's left, I guess.
How about if we add a sentence to the effect of, the applicant may delay installation of landscaping. As needed for continuing construction, provided they post a bond to cover the value.
That's fine.
That, that, that's fairly typical for things like this that.
Yeah, in, in a normal case, one building, that's an appropriate condition. We get separate buildings here and the, and the second one may not.
Yeah, I understand that you may be, you may not want to put in some landscaping because it'll get in the way of the second building.
They're out there with the equipment and they, you know, blow out the trees.
I can make that change.
Yeah, that's not unreasonable.
I do also note though, going back, I think condition nine. The construction detailed drawings of both buildings will have to come back in front of this planning board for approval. Very similar to what we go through with twelve Pond Street.
Which condition you're looking at?
Uh, condition number nine. The construction beach drawing must be submitted. And they'll come back in front of this board for final approval. And what we'll do is we'll compare them to the plans that were submitted and approved within the documents or records within this decision. And that will happen prior to the building permit being issued, very similar to what has happened. This is a new process that we're going to state.
Right. But I mean, you've got the color, we've approved on the color, so that wouldn't be subject to further review.
Nope, but we, we're just double checking. It's better to cut, you know, measure twice and cut once.
It does say approval not to be unreasonably withheld, so. So you should be.
This has been an important point because even if we compare this drawing set, which is obviously incomplete. It's just meant for this stage of the, of the game to other drawing sets that have submit, been submitted in the, in the, in the past year for other buildings. I mean, this is one, you know, it, it doesn't have the detail yet, right? It doesn't have the things that are needed for a complete set of drawings. So, but, so it's a normal part of the process now, you know, that obviously you'll be submitting something for a building permit. We expect those to be more detailed and more complete and then we'll look at it at that time. That's, it's been very typical for all the buildings, I think, in the past year that I've, that I've been through, I believe have had that note in all of them, so.
That's fair enough, thank you.
But I, I, I just want to confirm, we're in agreement with the colors, correct? But I, I, I just want to confirm, we're in agreement with the colors, correct?
The color is something we have only seen, I, I think, on, on digital screen. So no, you know, we would wanna, we would wanna take a look at those. You can't possibly be judging colors like looking at something digitally.
You, you, if the plans depict the colors we're proposing, I thought we stand up.
No, we talked, I talked about that last time. We talked about that, that anything on screen when you're relying on a digitally, you can name the color, but it doesn't look the same as a printout. I, I think we have, we have examples going up with that going on right now in town. So that's not something we accept anymore as like, hey, we listed this color, you saw it on the digital or on screen. It's not the same. We're gonna see it in person.
I don't think that's unreason, I don't think that's unreasonable. You know, I think we have held the past three months of this online. And so I think, I think that's not unreasonable.
But I, I think the planning board is in agreement that the color schemes based on the renderings are acceptable.
Yep.
But we want to see the actual material to see, you know,
That's right.
We know, we know the renderings are not color perfect.
We'll give you the, the color boards because we have them, so.
Yeah.
And I can distribute those and, and we can kind of iron, we can kind of come back to this.
I had a couple comments from you, I was looking at the site plan, but paragraph three and four of the site plan decision, again, a, a specific paragraphs that were taken from the covenant. The plans as you, you now have them and a little bit approved are a little bit different from that. One example, it says, you know, a seven foot high tree and fence, we've got a six foot high tree, excuse me, a six foot high fence. It talks about staggering, we've got a, a straight line of trees that everybody's in agreement. I think the language is taking the language from the covenant, which is not perfectly reflective of what you're now approving, is just gonna create a, a bit of an inconsistency if somebody wants to complain. So again, I'd like to go back to the concept of the whole intent has been fulfilled and, and, and we've got to construct the landscaping as shown on the plan.
I, I, I think it's clear we, we want you to build it according to the plan.
Right.
So you're in, in the site plan.
Twenty years ago is a little bit inconsistent.
Trying to find where, where exactly on this. So I, I'm looking at the site plan decision now. You said it was in paragraph, item three in the findings?
Yep.
Oh, what paragraph?
On the site thing, it's like paragraph three and four, which is on page eight.
What page? Oh, okay, so it's conditions three and four. Okay, I was looking in the findings, not the conditions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And, you know, this is something, Preston, I'm looking at the condition from, I mean, the decision from phase two, the modification, which put the fence and the, the trees around the Ferris's property. And I do not believe you guys talked about a height of a fence. But typically fences are typically residential fences or fences within, within town are all six feet tall. That's a, that's a typical height of a fence, I would say, across the board. And so a, a seven foot tall, tall fences, I would say, is the norm. However, that is reflected into the covenant, and I did take that verbatim from the covenant.
Because again, again, materials and compilation, here, there's a plan in the board shall determine. Well, you're determining tonight because you, you approve the plan.
You know, the question is, do you, do we want to hold up the covenant for the screening? And, and have them change the plan or just, you know, just state that the plan is as approved and fits the, fits the, fits the, fits the covenant as the, the intent of the covenant. Thank you, Mr. Berry.
Then Pete, we gotta try to find seven foot fence.
I understand that.
I think if we say as per the plan fulfilling the intent, I think that answers it.
Yeah, this says a six foot high cedar fence on, on four.
Yep.
It doesn't say seven.
Right.
On three.
And I thought our bylaw had certain restrictions on fences over six feet. I, I thought.
The building permit, all fences above six feet have to require a building permit.
Oh, okay.
That's why all fences are six feet tall.
Right.
It's like retaining walls over four feet.
Yes.
If we say we gotta build for the plan, we have to maintain the landscaping on the plan, I think is all you need to say.
Does any board member has a comment on this?
The six foot, seven foot difference doesn't mean that much to me. I, I think it's more of a, again, a legal issue of what we need to maintain. If it's a, if it's a legal issue, then, then, then we keep with covenant, you know? And as for the landscaping, I don't know which one is best. I don't know if it's best to have it in the straight line or, or, uh, what does it say, staggered every six to seven feet, like, I, I'm not sure if one of those is best or worst, you know?
Well, maybe that's just a discussion we add to the overall covenant discussion with Lisa, who just come up with the right language.
Uh, if the board sees fit, you know, I can, you know, reach out to council and get her opinion on it and then edit the decision as appropriate from that point on.
Yeah, I don't have any particular concerns on the wording of
Yeah.
these conditions.
From my point of view, I don't have any issues with the seven versus the six. I think it's.
It says six foot high cedar fence in the decision. I don't know where seven ever came from.
I think the seven is coming from the covenant, Preston.
It's coming from the covenant.
Right.
Okay, I don't.
So it should, you know, so the question is, should it be seven as per the covenant?
The, the part that's referenced at seven is for the visual barrier
Yes.
from the trees. It is not for the height of the fence.
Right, and that's, theoretically, that's a problem too, because we're putting in the trees from day one. It's not creating a seven foot high total, you know, impervious barrier. Because they're trees, they're gonna grow to do that, but they're not going in that day as day one. You don't install a seven foot high hedge along, gotta be a thousand feet of a property line.
Yeah, I'm, uh, we also had design review, uh, review the landscaping on this. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
So I, I am comfortable with the landscaping and fencing as per the plans.
Me also, me too.
Yeah, it's, it's, and it says in here, to provide for a visual barrier substantially in excess of such seven feet in height at maturity. It says at the end of point three. So it's not saying it has to go in at seven, you know, to be perfect, that's at seven feet the day they put it in. It says at maturity. So you're not planting tulips or something as a visual barrier, you know?
It, it's saying that's the design intention, which means that years from now, if there's a clear issue at seven feet or below in the visual barrier when the trees are mature, we can say, uh, you need to put in another tree here.
Yep.
So actually, I kind of like the decision being worded that way.
All right. And there were a couple other references to the, you know, silt section erosion controls that we have to install, which are, which are part of an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. And I was just hoping to have that have the same reference, we gotta comply with the requirements of the order of conditions from the Conservation Commission.
And, and that's something. It is on the plan, and, and I think we just note that, that's, there needs to be a compliance with the Conservation Commission's notice of intent. And that would suffice.
Uh, we do want to have a requirement that silt fences and other temporary construction items be removed at the end. We, we've had projects where those are left in place, and they're kind of just left to kind of die in the edge of the wetlands, and it's ugly. And we should make sure they are removed, unless otherwise instructed by the Conservation Commission. But I, I would think generally those are construction items and should be removed when you're not doing construction.
There was one other condition that it had a restriction from the viewpoint of the residential. I understand the reason for that restriction bearing in mind, you know, the, the downtown and visible traveling downtown. But we're hoping not to have restrictions on the balconies on the back of building one A that won't be seen by anybody. Nor, nor what we're asking for is that the area behind the fence next to building one A, then the residential people could have that, they could have their barbecue out there, particularly the, the unit one or owner on the basement. So we're hoping to exclude the area behind the fence and the balconies, as well as the residential area beside three from the restrictions that say you can't have any residential materials on the site. It's just limited to those areas.
Uh, is that thirty-eight? No household, no storage of household items, toys, tools, bicycles, laundry, garbage, or the like shall be allowed on the outside of the premises or balconies?
Right. The only balcony is on the back of building one A, which won't, people won't see. And then again, we got secluded residential areas for the tenants, if we want to have the right to have them do it in there. So if we limit it to that, that's fine.
Doesn't, doesn't that note really talk about just, uh, storage of household items? I don't think it's talking about a grill or patio furniture or anything like that. You know, so.
I don't care if somebody wants to put their bike on their patio up there. I mean, it's not, you know, it, it's very different from if they want to do it downtown.
Right. Well, if you want to take that the restriction altogether, that's fine, because we're gonna deal with it in-house anyways, because we want to avoid the residential, you know, conflicting with the, the parking lot anyways.
Yeah, I, I'm not convinced that this is a important restriction on this site, because the areas where this would impact are not highly visible outside the site. And as you said, you know, clearly they have their own interest in keeping the commercial side working well with whatever residential they have.
I mean, I, I think there is some visibility in the middle school from these balconies to the, to the rear. I mean, this building is fairly close to that existing storage building, and there's definitely an opening there in those trees between the, between the middle school and this building. So I, I certainly don't want to stop anybody from having their barbecue back there on the, on their, their back porch or having patio furniture with, you know, normal, but taking it out completely, would, you know, if you get into, you know, laundry, you know, laundry or different things like that, I, I, you know.
Maybe we saw an area is not visible from West Union Street?
Well, that, that's visible from the middle school is, is Joe's point. At the same time, I don't want to tell people they can't hang their laundry out to dry either.
I mean, putting it on a balcony like that is a fire hazard though, Preston. I mean, that's typically.
Yeah, it's one thing, yeah.
I, I don't, I, I'm not, I'm not an expert on fire code. I just, I just generally know, I don't know, there's usually a restriction there. I have no problem with people drying their laundry either, but.
I can, I can try to edit that and try to take out some of the, you know, the household stuff, but leave, I would say, but keeping the, I would say, the visual, you know, the unpleasant views, I would say, and from, from, you know, to, and, and add in the sentence about West Union Street.
And about egress, you know?
Correct.
To maintain sufficient egress and, yeah, I mean, I, I think we're, we all know what we're trying to get at here. It's, it's those, those balconies that just become a huge problem. Not, not only because they look terrible, but because you, you wouldn't be able to, you wouldn't be able to get down from them. Because they become so full of trash, you know, basically. So that's the condition that we need to, that we're trying to prevent. And then my, and, and you could go say the opposite, because you can't see it, it makes it all the more possible that it would get crowded with stuff. So, which is that much more dangerous. So I don't think it should come out completely, but I think it could, there could be a better, better describing the concerns, perhaps.
Okay.
The premises and balconies must be kept clear, or something like that, maybe.
Okay, I'll work on that one. Uh, and I'll, I'll, I'll meet with town council.
The one question I had that wasn't part of this, from the viewpoint of maybe adding additional residential units, use building three as an example, on, on the ground floor of building three in front of the existing residential unit we show, there's like a thousand square foot of a contractor's bay. If it turned out somebody wanted to, to have another apartment there, the thousand square feet, we've been identified for employees there, which I think is, you know, at least three spaces. If we converted it to a, a residential use, it would only require two, so we could be compliant with parking. Would the board be comfortable that saying we can mix uses on the site, provided we, we, we remain within the parking requirement?
I, I would think that would be a significant enough change that we'd want you to come back to us first and say, here's the plan. I, 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 I could see the planning board approving something like that, but I, I don't think we want to say now.
Leave it at a later date.
You, you can make that big of a change with, without coming back to us.
Okay. And I think there was some language that we wanted to make clear in the nature of the, the contractors used that we've been talking about. Because one of the, one of the people we, he's already talked to us about is a potential welder. In, in the bylaw talks about appliance repair, small engine repair and everything else. Now, that's certainly working on customers' stuff. So we're hoping to add kind of a, a, a reference to the people that could be in there, the contractors, a welder, electrician, painter, that type of thing, home, home supply thing, where they would work on, again, the, the customers' deals, all the work has to be done and put inside the buildings because there's nothing outside for anybody. And also, like, the, the, the commercial I saw, the garage door company has a number of vans. They may fix their own vans. I just want to make sure we have the understanding that as long as the, the person that owned, let's call it Bay One, brings their vehicles or whatever into the Bay One site, they can fix their own things within their building. So I, I don't have the exact language with that, but I just want to make sure that everybody's comfortable with that, and then we can work it out.
I guess it depends on how much they're doing, if they're gonna be doing bodywork and painting or rebuilding.
Not, not, not a separate auto body repair shop. That's a defined use in your bylaw. That electrician just has a couple vans that he, you know, wants to save money and fix his own, change his own oil, change his own things inside.
If, if it's a allowed use within the zoning or an ancillary use, I would think that's reasonable. You know, it's like, you're not allowed to do auto repair in your garage at home. But if you happen to own a car and. But if you happen to own a car and you look up on YouTube how to replace your car stereo and you go do that in your garage, nobody cares.
Right.
Uh, that's great. Uh, or if you change your own oil, that's great. You can't do it as a business.
Right.
For other people. But um, I would think that would be the same here, but I'm not a legal expert. Uh, but I I don't, from a planning board standpoint, I don't have a problem with it, but I won't tell you from a zoning legal standpoint whether or not you have the right to do that, because that's not something we make the determination.
How about that would come up with like exact language for the final decision, so.
I can, uh, I'll work on, I'll work on that with town council. Uh, in 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 and try to draft something up.
You gotta tell them what the issues. Bill has a question and I think it, I don't know what it is in the special permit, but on the site plan, I think it's paragraph eight.
Hi, so you know, it talks, it's talking about the seat of fence and then, I don't know, four or five lines down. No material stockpiles be closer than fifteen to the fence line. Um, and then it talks about no stockpiles located must be located at least fifty feet from the wetlands. And I think.
I think maybe the easiest thing to do with that is that the stockpiles have to be as allowed by the Conservation Commission order or conditions, which has the whole things from erosion controls and locations and limit of work and everything else. So maybe we just refer to the Concom order.
Well, if we're trying to stay, I mean, I think it says something about, does it say something about the fence here? No, so, I mean, it's just, I I believe that when we entered Concom, we were closer than fifty feet. I mean, everything that we did. Now it was approved by Concom was closer than fifty feet and there was no violations of any of the wetlands, not once. We have a, and and matter of fact, we dug a low area all the way along the wetlands to make sure there was never even a chance of any type of search charge. So we just wanted some flexibility there according to what the Concom approved, if this board would allow that.
Okay, where it says the the can, the part of the condition I think you're referring to says soil stockpile shall be located at least fifty feet from any wetland, water body, drain inlet, or open channel. I would be willing to extend that sentence with the phrase unless explicitly approved by the Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
Is, do I see nodding of heads from the planning board? Is that good? Okay.
Can can you say that one more time, Preston? Can you do that one more time?
Okay, so soil stockpiles still be located at least fifty feet from any wetland, et cetera. Unless otherwise, in unless explicitly approved by the Conservation Commission. So the the assumption is we want to protect the wetlands and uh other ways that things get into the drain system. And if the Conservation Commission does their review and says it doesn't have to be fifty feet away from this drain or from this wetland and uh then they then we would allow it. But unless they get explicit permission from the Conservation Commission, they can't do that.
And and by the way, I think this is, this really, you know, looking at this, this is something that was a, this is a boilerplate condition. And so I think it makes sense to kind of go back to the Conservation Commission and rely on their O N I.
Yeah, and I I think just in general going forward, saying, you know, we're protecting the wetlands. But we defer to the Conservation Commission if if they, because they know it better.
Mm-hmm, and it's any wetland, any wetland, a hundred, you know, any work within a hundred foot of a wetlands in their jurisdiction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You got anything else?
And.
Just, I think that's it from our perspective.
Okay, I'll, um. Are we at a point for taking public comment? Um. All right, um, for public comment, I'll take Joe Mignani first. Uh, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I I I do have a few questions. And I'll direct the questions to you, Preston, and you can uh relay them to Mr. Barbary and to the rest of your committee. One, I I was unaware that I knew there were two other buildings going to be built and I wasn't sure what type of buildings they would be, but I understand they're going to be mixed use, so there'll be residential on the top. How many bedrooms are we looking at per unit?
All right, the ju- just to be clear, uh, the residential is on one side of each building. They changed around the design slightly.
I agree to that, so.
Uh, I'll, just a second, I'll, I'll let you answer in a second, but the, on uh building one, as you're looking from West Union Street, uh, they'd be on the right, there are residential units. And uh, on building two, uh, they are also on the the right as you face the building closer to West Union Street. Uh, and if the applicant would uh answer the question on bedrooms, that would be awesome.
Yeah, so building one A is is the building that it's half of, the left-hand side is is particularly visible from West Union, the right-hand side, you really got to look and see where you're looking at it. But on the right-hand side of that building, uh, there's a residential unit on the first floor. There's a residential unit on the second floor and there's a residential unit on the third floor. One is a two-bedroom. And two of them are three-bedrooms. And then the back building is is uh two-two-bedroom units.
Okay, so there's a potential of children possibly living in those units, the uh, the three-bedroom units. And and if and if that's the possib- if that's a possibility, will there be any area designated for a play area for those kids uh, in and around that area?
Yeah.
I'm kind of curious about that.
There's a fenced-in area to the side of that building uh, for the residential units and then for the two bedrooms, there's a res- there's a grassed area to the adjacent to that building.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barber. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Um, and I apologize for my ignorance of the of the project, but just listening to what was being said tonight, I just had a couple more quick questions. Uh, the uh, the trash uh retainers that that are going to be utilized, uh, you said you have two. Will they be fenced in and not visible from the public?
Yeah, there there's two, there's one for each building that are totally fenced in. It's all private contract.
Okay, great, thank you, because that is a current problem that we have right now in town, even though they are fenced in that uh like anything else. You have good intentions, but sometimes the people that utilize them don't do what need to be done. So you have trash all over the place. We hate to see that happen, especially in the visible area.
They're behind the building, so one of them is way behind the other end of the site. The one behind building one A is is to some extent behind building one A, what, maybe four hundred feet from the road?
Yeah.
And and it screamed in and and chained in fenced in.
And the the other question that I have is that you had mentioned something about uh one of the uh potential uh businesses being a welder. Uh, you may want to talk to Chief Roby about uh acetylene and other and other you and other uh flammable uh, uses in that building, especially if there there'll be residential uh units in and around that area. Uh, I think there's some restrictions on that, uh, but don't hold me, you know, don't hold me to that, but I believe there may be.
Absolutely, and always bring buildings because of the sides are fully sprinkly.
Okay, that's what I figured. And are there any affordable units?
No.
I knew that was going to come, Emma. Will there be any affordable units uh in in any of those locations?
No.
Now, the there are five units total, so uh presumably even if we had a affordable bylaw, it probably would not trigger that and we don't have such a bylaw yet.
Okay, but sometimes the good graces of the builder would do that, especially if we had a uh, a building agreement with uh with the contractor, but I don't see that's going to be happening because apparently this project was already approved uh over twenty years ago and just never was submitted. Is that correct?
Uh, the, there's a long history.
Yeah, I understand.
I I I don't think what you said is exactly correct, but there there is, they they have been we're going back and forth with the planning board on this for about a year now. And there is a, and it was envisioned to be a phase two for years before that and uh, there've been a lot of changes, um. So, yes.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, thank you for letting me ask those questions. Appreciate it.
All right, uh, Mark Dasani, I believe, uh, you had a question?
Yes, I do. Okay, wait a second, let me just turn the TV down. Okay, I have um, what you've gone over, but I just wanted to do some verifications and answers. You went over the um earlier, your um decisions, what's what's your, what the decision made. And um, I wanted to say a couple of, couple, um, I I got three, four things here, I know we're real quick on. And I wanted to just make sure. First of all, we started early to talk about this, the rock crushing and the school hours because of the noise of the rock crushing. The noise does echo and it does carry. And I know that because I have that done here, up up next to my house, I have done here about fifteen feet away from my window. And the school hours are eight in the morning till about four, three, four o'clock. So that that's that's one thing. And um, to install electrical for for the car charging should be optional and and have no, less than five in there because of the uh area. And so, and the and the village in America is in eighty-one are totally different in site uses, so comparing them for that, for that reason may not be uh all good, all good and and all good to do that. And um, my question would be, I'm not done, I got, I got a little bit more, not much. Why is cars being this, they start, um, discussed? And why is the past coming back again? And that's it. And I go, I want people to really answer this after. Site change is already done or should be done. That's what was talked about before. And if you're adding anything that's needed, it could be a simply slip in the beginning just because you wanted to add more to it. Twelve Horn Street and this one is a wrong comparison because they're not in the same usages. Um, the balconies are tense responsibility, so no matter how you want to have a, some sort of um idea of what to run through that, the town is going to have to realize that they have to do, they may not do it at all. And uh, sounds like um Trish and others are barking to go forward again, which is like going back and back again, it's just, it's just a solid. And I agree with Attorney Barber about the intent. And he just wanted to let, the very last thing is you said, mixed uses of the um, especially the park and you all disagree on, that's, that's what I have so far. And it's been going well, going good. Over an hour, but worth the, worth the time to stay and listen. Thank you. Now you can mute me.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there any other public comment at this time?
Yes, Emery Bond here. So at the.
Yes, go ahead.
At the beginning of the meeting, the applicant's attorney, Attorney Barber, he said there was new stamped architectural drawings. Uh, are those for, what are those drawings and where are they?
Mr. Bond, they were submitted today and uh, and and there, they haven't been, the the only changes were the changes that were talked about at the planning board meeting uh the last time we met.
So the previous drawings were submitted last Thursday afternoon, which obviously didn't give us a lot of time. And I understand there's been a lot of little changes over time, um, but be being the fact that there are new changes and a new drawing that compiles all those changes. Um, it would be great to see those drawings before uh the conclusion of this meeting. We, you know, the board just went through over an hour of the decisions and these drawings haven't even been seen.
Mr. Barber, can you, do you want a response?
Yeah, the the building three drawings, as I said at the beginning, are the exact same drawings you had, they're stamped by the architect. There was a a corner uh detail added to it. Colors didn't change, roof didn't change, nothing else changed. Um, and there was the uh clarification of the signage to make from the viewpoint of the the wall signs we get on building one A consistent with building three. On building one, the only change from the plans last thing is that those uh boxes in those elements under the dormers were taken off, otherwise the the exact same plans that you had last time. So there's no significant change in any of the plans.
So there's been so many in and out changes that it's been very hard to follow along with, so if there's a we'll call it a cohesive set of drawings that document all those changes and that's the final submission to the project. Would you think those drawings would be publicly available prior to this meeting for comment? Or do we just present things as we go? Is this designer view? Do we make this up as we go? I'm just a little confused.
Uh, it would have been nice if these had been posted on the town website. Uh, I know the uh, they were emailed to the planning board members as links to a Google Drive. I don't know if they're also on the town website, uh, if our town planner could comment on that.
Does anyone have one that gets shared right now?
Yeah, I have them if you want to see them.
I mean, I got it on my other computer.
I'm going to look at them for ten minutes on a call. It's already been an hour and half long. I I would, I need some time to flip through them. Uh, there's been so many changes and so many variations of these drawings. I just need to know what the board is approving, what is the final drawing. I've I've never seen a stamped architectural drawing posted on the town's website.
Uh, I I have them on my computer and I was looking at them and they look exactly like what we looked at at our previous meeting, with the only difference being, as stated, that those little boxes that they had added under the dormers are have gone back away.
As of last week, Wednesday, I requested uh an email for clarification on what the most recent drawings were. And Thursday afternoon, those drawings were posted to the town's website. So here we are on Monday, that doesn't give the public a lot of time to look at that, and now there's a new set of drawings that are not publicly available. I'm I'm just a little confused on the process and how this works. There's, there's no transparency here.
Uh, I disagree with your characterization, but you're welcome to have that opinion.
I think at the last meeting when we discussed all this extensively, we were basically coming to the conclusion or came to the conclusion that the plans as they were shown last week were the plans, except for the fact that we had asked them to take off the little the the little detail that they had added. Other than that, we, even last week, I I believe we discussed no changes.
But even at last, even at last week's meeting, those drawings were presented at that meeting. They weren't publicly available prior to that. I I just want to see the final drawing set before the decision is made.
And Mr. Barber, can you please, uh, or Preston, share your screen and show them the final.
And I, and I'm not looking to look at a set of drawings right now at this meeting. I'd like to to sit on my laptop or print them out and take a look at them. I'm not going to be put on the spot to look at drawings that I've never seen before.
It is not, it is not uncommon i- at a time of a vote of a meeting to present plans on the night of the meeting. I don't know how necessarily active it is in Holliston, but I will tell you of all the communities I I deal with, it's not uncommon to submit a last final set of revised plans at the meeting that you're at, that that the board and in in the public ordinarily public would have it. You can put up, put them up on the screen, give them the same opportunity. But it's not uncommon to present final changes as requested to the board at the meeting for the for the vote.
Yeah, and i- if not for the particular scheduling issues, uh, we would probably want to uh, have the the changes we've discussed, the decision drafted up and have one last meeting uh, where we have all the documents perfectly in order. Uh, that's not going to work this time, uh, and I apologize that we didn't get the documents online. Uh, it would have been nice if uh, when they were sent to the planning board, they were also put on the town website at the same time. Uh, I would suggest that in the future, that would be the best way of doing it, uh, instead of emailing us a Google Drive link that's not open to the public. Uh, email us a link to the town website, so that the public sees the same thing. Um, that would be a nice thing in the future.
What, what are we rushing for? We've, we've been almost a year in permitting on this project and now we're trying to rush and things are not being. We've, we've been almost a year in permitting on this project, and now we're trying to rush, and things are not being shared with the public, they're not available. I don't even, it's been hard to follow the last three, four meetings because of the changes. And, and now you're saying that the transparency that you disagree with, the drawings aren't available, I just want to see what's being built.
I, I have been getting the drawings online, besides these last ones that were, um, sent today, or where I looked at them myself today. Last time, which was our last meeting, was not last week, but the week before, I was accessing the drawings off of the town website.
And I wasn't able, but those weren't the correct drawings, they weren't the correctly dated drawings, they were not.
I, I think they were, I think I was actually looking at the most up-to-date drawings.
They were not. So moving on to my second point, because again, we're not going to sit here for two hours and look at the drawings, I think that's absolutely absurd. The, the second thing is, uh, in addition to the crushing, um, there should be a notification about anything for hammering and or blasting of ledge. Um, if there is ledge on the property and it needs to be hammered, you know, that, that should go with the crushing, that it should be notified to the abutters.
Yeah, uh, would the applicant respond to that, would that be okay to add along with the rock crushing? That, that does seem appropriate.
Yes. Yeah, John can pull those plans up for you now, but as, as has been, has been reported by me and board members, there are no changes to the plans with the exception of what you asked for from the last meeting.
I just want to go on, that I haven't seen them, and that's all.
Yeah, I understand, and I appreciate your frustration. Uh, as to the issue with any, uh, hammering or blasting of ledge, uh, having that with the same, uh, notification condition as we have for rock crushing, do you agree that that would be, does everyone agree that's reasonable?
We do, we do, I think actually that was in the, the last one too, we agree to that.
Okay, uh, Peter, could you make sure that that's, that's in there?
Yes, I already made note, I already made note of that, and I can add that to that condition.
Okay.
And then a question to the board is, who's, who's going to be the enforcement authority? Who's the code enforcement officer?
The code enforcement officer is the zoning enforcement officer.
And who's that?
Mike Christopher Lee, uh, by law, who is the building commissioner, would, is the code enforcement officer.
And then a question for the applicant, what is the duration for this project? How, how many months of construction is this going to be?
It will be, um, relative to, the first, when, when we build them, we'll probably likely build one at a time, depending upon the market conditions. And according to the board's requirements, will be required at times, if one is occupied before the other, we're going to be required to manage dust and control and secure the site, um, in the meantime.
But are we talking about a year, two years, what are we talking about a project duration here?
Well, as, as Peter mentioned, we have other commitments that we're currently involved in. Uh, we had originally thought we were starting this last fall, so when those, um, commitments allow us to free up, then we will start the project. But in the meantime, I've agreed in conversation with Peter in here tonight, that I'm obviously still responsible for, um, the dust and, um, you know, protection and security of the site. That's why we've moved to plant grass next to Mr. Ferris's house, it will eventually be a parking lot. It's also why we're going to be continuing our work in the back section where the future, uh, storage building is going. And we're going to be putting down about twenty-five thousand square feet of mulch to protect that area, so that is no longer an issue. So the responsibility for taking care of the site will be, uh, ongoing.
I, I understand that, but say, say you were able to start this tomorrow, are you going to build it in a month? Are you going to build it in a year? Is it going to be five years? Like, take the equation of your current work, just looking at a pick, uh, pencil-on-paper plan, are we talking a year, two years, five years? What are we talking about?
We've calculated the duration.
Do you want us to plot the architectural plans?
Not, not right now, we can do that after.
Which of the two buildings are you building first?
Well, it's going to be dependent upon, you know, what we have for tenants, but we believe the first one right now, the front one.
The key, the key in marketing is going to be Building One A, if there's no tenants to move in, the bank's not going to finance the project without committed tenants. So then it gets delayed. So yeah, the best effort is, is to do it as soon as we can, but market is going to control when it actually starts.
And we agreed with Peter, who made it clear today, regardless of that circumstance, we're still obligated to the things that I just mentioned too, and I, and I agree with, with Peter.
Um, and then my last comment is, the fence in the arborvitae's that go along the perimeter of the property, are those going to be installed at the beginning of the property like it was in phase one?
Well, it's, it's not possible in, in some of the sections, because there's major tree clearing that has to be done.
I understand that, but once the tree clearing is done, is it your intent to put the fence in the arborvitae's up?
No, because the building will have to go in, because if the building is not done, the arborvitae's and the fence would be impacted structurally.
The, the plantings and everything along your side will be built at the time the building is built.
I, I would just, I would prefer to see them go in first, while if we're building Building One A first.
We can't, because then you excavate that site, at that point in time, it's eight feet below your property, you can't plant them and then excavate for the building.
I, I would at least like to see them go in at the beginning of the project of Building One A's going in, because that will give them ample time to mature, grab that sunlight before they're shaded by the building. Um, going back to building, uh, going back to phase one, if you go to the decision there, Mr. Ferris asked for ten-foot-tall arborvitae's, and he got ten-foot-tall arborvitae's. I'm not asking for that, I'm just asking for the plantings to go in first, so that they can grow a little bit before the building goes up. I would just ask for you to consider that. And then my, my last thing is, so haven't seen the new changes to the drawings, I get that, it sounds like that's a mute point, because, you know, we're not going to sit here for an hour, but I know the building's not going to change the location, it's going to stay where it is, it's going to have the flat roof, which I'm not a huge fan of, but I'm not going to make a big deal out of that. Um, I will say, the applicant and I have been able to reach an agreement on the tree that we share on our property. Um, I will commend him for that, for, you know, his good faith effort and our communication that we've had. Um, I look forward to going through that in the future and keeping an open line of communication. Um, but again, you know, not, not seeing the drawings, I, you know, I'm going to just go on the record that I never saw them, so, um, that, that's all I have, and, uh, you know, hopefully this puts together, uh, puts the bed a over, close to a year-long permitting process that's been fraught with ups and downs, and I appreciate everybody's patience and, you know, we're looking forward to see this project being built and, you know, sitting five years from now and, you know, having the literal dust settle and everyone being happy, so thank you so much.
I just add something from Mr. Bond as well, um, and I'm just speaking for myself, but, um, I, if there are problems with them, I mean, we're not enforcement officers, but if there's an enforcement issue, like, by all means, I mean, reach out to whoever, uh, to Mike as Peter said, but don't hesitate to CC the planning board on that email, I mean, I'm not an enforcement person, but if there's a problem, I'll do whatever I can to try and intervene or reach out or do whatever.
And, and I'm off, I'm off the mystic, because the applicant is actually building these buildings, whereas the company from Utah, it, it was the Wild West, there was no accountability, did whatever they wanted, so the applicant has a lot more skin in the game here, and I, and he has made changes, you know, with the hydro seeding and controlling the dust and, you know, the water cannon that he's ordered to wa- to water the site. You know, we're really looking forward to, you know, him performing the items that he said, and, you know, he's going to be different, he's not, he's not the company from Utah, so, um, hopefully we, hopefully we don't have those issues.
All right, um, that is the end of the public comment. I think our process here is to close the public hearing, and then we would, uh, vote, uh, the decisions with the, uh, changes as specified. And then, uh, we would designate, uh, one planning board member to sign on behalf of the board, uh, after verifying, uh, that the changes have been made correctly. I would suggest that member not be me, uh, because with the upcoming election, uh, that would mean I would have to sign, uh, tomorrow or Wednesday, and that, uh, constrains the time more as far as, uh, town council review or any other, um, changes that might need to be made. Is that, is that the correct procedure, uh, Peter?
That is the correct procedure, I would ask for either the clerk, uh, Ms. Dale Buchanan and/or the vice chair Joe Ruberton to step forth, uh, and take the responsibility of signing this decision.
Uh, that would make sense to me as well. Um, with the, with that being said, um, uh, is there any, does anyone have anything that they want to say before we close the public hearing?
Process, I probably doesn't really do said during the public hearing, but, so Peter's going to be making these changes and sending it around again to, to us to read?
Uh, yeah, so I will, uh, send the, the decision after I make the changes back to town council and all planning board members, uh, just as a, as a proofread. Um, the one thing we will not be able to do is reply all, but if you see any comments or if I made any mistakes or errors or misinterpreted any, uh, elements of tonight's meeting, uh, you could, uh, directly email Emery and myself, and I will make those changes, then recirculate that decision. I, I think we, uh, the planning office will be able to turn this around fairly quickly, uh, hopefully, and, uh, but that will be the process moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, uh, with that, I will entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
Go move.
Second.
Uh, that was, uh, moved by Joe and seconded by Trish.
Moved by Dale.
Dale.
Seconded by Trish.
And seconded by Tricia. It gets a little confusing in these Zoom meetings, uh, all in favor, actually, roll call vote?
Joe Buchanan, aye.
Tricia Kendall, aye.
Joe Williams, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
And Preston Crowe, aye, that passes five-zero. All right, uh, now, uh, we would need, uh, two motions. Uh, we should do, uh, the, uh, special permit first, uh, this requires, uh, four votes, uh, in the affirmative to pass. And, uh, Peter, would you, uh, remind us, uh, just as a process, uh, what exactly, uh, the special permit, uh, remind, remind everyone what triggered the special permit? So we're very clear on, uh, which aspect of this plan the special permit is granting.
The two elements of the special permit, number one, it was for the mixed use, uh, which was therefore triggered by the covenant. And then the second special permit was for the grading change, uh, for the proposed plan, uh, to be specific. I can tell you it was, uh, excuse me for the delay.
You're looking for the section three-point-one for the use?
Yes, it's section three-point-use third one and five-point. Thank you, Mr. Barbieri.
Uh, wait, what was the second?
Five-point-eight. One, oh, five-point-eight, I'm sorry.
Five-point-eight, which is for?
Site alteration.
Site alteration.
Okay, I thought the site alteration special permit was only required if there was not a site plan review involved.
It's still required.
Okay, I, I apparently misunderstood that. Um, so I can learn something in my last meeting, that's good. Um, all right, so, uh, we will need a motion to grant the special permit. I'll entertain that now.
So move.
Second.
That was moved by Dale and seconded by Tricia, and we'll do a roll call vote.
Joe Buchanan, aye.
Tricia Kendall, aye.
Joe Williams, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Preston Crowe, aye, that passes five-zero. And now we have the, uh, decision, the, uh, vote on the site plan. I would entertain a motion to grant the, uh, site plan approval, uh, with the conditions, uh, as discussed in the meeting.
Go move.
Do we need to say something, subject, subject to final review by the board?
Yes, uh, that, with the conditions as, uh, as printed, with changes as discussed, with final, uh, review by the board.
Go move.
Second.
All right, uh, that was moved by Dale and seconded by Tricia, uh, roll call vote.
Joe Buchanan, aye.
Tricia Kendall, aye.
Joe Williams, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Preston Crowe, aye, that passes five-zero. So, uh, that, I believe, completes our, uh, review of this, pending, uh, review, uh, review of the final decision. Uh, we need one more motion, uh, which would be to designate a, uh, specific member to sign, uh, these decisions on behalf of the board.
I'll be, I'd be willing as the vice chair to sign, if the other board members are accept, accepted, that's acceptable to the remaining board members.
That's good.
That's good.
All right, uh, can we have a motion to designate, uh, that Joe Ruberton as vice chair is to sign, uh, both the site plan review and special permit decisions on behalf of the board, uh, after, uh, the board has, uh, reviewed the updates to the conditions?
Go move.
Second.
And, uh, roll call vote, that was motion made by Dale and seconded by Tricia.
Joe Buchanan, aye.
Tricia Kendall, aye.
Joe Williams, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Preston Crowe, aye, that passes five-zero.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I believe that, uh, concludes our, uh, consideration of this item. Is that correct, Peter?
Correct, that's correct.
Uh, we may have a few other internal or, or minor items to deal with. Looking at our agenda, it says administrative matters, future meetings, and report from board members and town planner. Uh, what do we have, Peter?
Um, well, the next meeting for everybody beside you, President, is this Thursday. However, uh, I do want to take this second and publicly note and thank you for your time on the board. Uh, typically, uh, we would be having, obviously, sitting around the table, in-person meeting, and we could, um, and we would be able to kind of make this a little bit more formal. But since we are on via Zoom, uh, maybe, uh, we can, we can, you know, you know, share, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll work to plan something into the future, but, um, I just wanted to thank you, and I, and I, and I hopefully speak for, you know, all the board members, and I know I speak for all the board members, um, for your time on the planning board and your volunteering for the community. Uh, and I, and I think you'll be, you know, you will, you'll be missed. Uh, I know I've only worked with you and known you for the past year, and I want to thank you for working with me and teaching me about Ashland. Uh, and I think you were the, one of the first people I met, uh, when I arrived in Ashland. And so, uh, I always will, will lean on you and call you when I have some questions, but, uh, about, you know, how things went down. But, uh, I just wanted to reach out and, and thank you for, for your time on the planning board.
Welcome. Uh, I, I have a couple of things to say on, on that note, that I've been thinking about. Uh, I have, uh, will have served a total time of fifteen years, one month, and three weeks on the planning board, uh, from election to election. I, uh, reviewed, um, my planning board files, and I may be missing some copies of minutes here and there, uh, but based on the minutes, the files that I have, I have attended at least, uh, three hundred and sixty planning board meetings. Uh, and I have kept, uh, digital copies of almost every paper that was handed to us. Uh, I've, after planning board meetings, I scan them, and, uh, I now have a, uh, over four thousand separate files of, in my, my records. And, uh, I will be making a copy of those available for the planning office to make sure that, uh, that all of that is still around. Um, I assume most of that is already there in the town's files, but just in case there's something, uh, someday you need, uh, that will be there. I am going to miss being on the planning board, particularly as you finish up with 128 Main Street. That's the one thing I feel I'm kind of leaving in the middle of that I wish I weren't. But I know the planning board's in good hands. We have good people, good staff, and you know what you're doing. And I also am aware there have been times when the select board has been a little pushy with the planning board and kind of stepped on some toes. And with that in mind, I'm going to be especially careful to try not to do that. Assuming I win my election. And if I ever do slap me around metaphorically and tell me to step down and that you're an independent board, or if anybody else does, the planning board is independent and it's very important for the planning board to be independent. And focus on the importance of the land use and what things are going to be like going forward because the projects approved here last for 50 or 100 years. And so that, you know, the short-term financial implications that the select board may be looking at are not always the right issues for the planning board to be looking at. It's good that we have different people looking at different aspects. I don't want to stop talking because I like this, but I think I should.
Preston, you really made it our job a lot easier. I appreciate that. And it's good to know that if town hall ever burns down, we have all the records still. Good luck.
So, yeah, so, you know, Preston, I think, I think 15 years on the planning board is an absolutely massive number. And I think you've seen a lot in your time here. And, you know, I'd say, I just want to say, I've appreciated working with you and getting to know you. I think you have a great demeanor about you. You listen to people. You don't rush quick to judgment and, you know, I think you, you're a very fair and balanced individual. So, you know, thanks for, you know, for, for, for your time and service to the town of Ashland. And thanks for being, you know, an easy guy for a new member to work with and learn from and kind of come up to speed. And it's been, it's been an honor to serve with you and I wish you luck in your election.
Thank you. And you're definitely up to speed now.
I did not realize, Preston, that you have been on the planning board almost the entire time that I have lived in Ashland. I wasn't very involved when I first moved to Ashland. I was working in the city and I had no idea that your tenure has spanned basically my entire existence in Ashland. So thank you very much for that dedication, all those years I hadn't realized. So I know you'll continue to be involved in many things. I have no doubt about that. So there's no goodbyes here.
You're welcome. And I enjoyed serving with you on the sustainability committee as well.
I enjoyed that as well. Yeah. Speaking of which.
Speaking of that, I also, yeah, well, you weren't speaking, so I'll say the same to you. I also, I also really enjoyed serving with you, Phil, on the sustainability committee.
Preston, I got on the sustainability committee and you were there. I got on the planning board and you were there. But I can promise you, if you get on the selecting or select board, I will not follow you. So good luck. I wish you the best. I remember when I started on the sustainability committee and you had been on planning board for like eight years. I was like, wow, that's a tremendously long time. And now here we are, seven, eight years out from that. So that's, I don't know, is there a record for the longest time served on a board in town?
I don't know. I, I don't want to tell that. I do know that I have served under every planning director that Ashland has ever had because Steve Curlin had been planning, was the town's first planning director and he stayed for a very long time. So I've served with four planning directors.
It's a lot of perspective.
Yeah.
Well, we need to, we need to send out some cake.
I would love.
We have one year left over from Father's Day. I can show.
Instacart, baby. It's coming, Preston.
Maybe when the COVID lifts, we'll be able to meet up somewhere, somewhere. Where there's not a party, so. But I do want to publicly thank you, Preston. You know, I'm sure everyone appreciates, you know, your volunteer, your ability to volunteer for the town for 15 years. It may be longer depending on Wednesday's election.
Yep.
You gotta go for 16 on the select board?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
You gotta go for 16 on the select board if you win?
Well, those are three-year terms, so it'll be a multiple of three.
18.
We'll see. Probably not. I think the select board is more work and probably won't be as long.
30 is a nice round number that goes with three.
Oh, my goodness. Yeah. Now, the important thing though, for people watching, is the town election is Wednesday. It is not the usual hours. It is 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And I know over 500 people have received mail-in ballots. And if you still have one, you have to sign the envelope that you put it into. There's a form on the envelope that you fill out. It's pretty straightforward. And then you can put those into the Dropbox at town hall. So you don't have to worry about the post office getting it there in time if you do that. And I thank everyone for participating and for all the people who voted for me in my previous elections, allowing me to have this honor. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much and it was a pleasure. And thank you for, everyone for joining in tonight and logging in. And I will see all but you, Preston, on Thursday night.
Do I need to motion this meeting over?
I need somebody to move to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn this meeting at 9:13 PM.
So moved. Oh, sorry, second.
All right, that was a motion by Dale, seconded by Tricia. We will do a roll call vote.
Joe Buchanan, aye.
Tricia Kendall, aye.
William's aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Preston Crowe, no. I want to keep doing this forever. That motion passes four to one. Thank you and good night.
Good night.
Have a good night.